Okay, today is Monday, December 9th, 2019. This is a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. I ask all present to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a single item agenda. It's regarding a poll hearing. I think part of that's on the agenda for tomorrow night regarding a property at 584 Middle Road and request to put in some utility infrastructure to serve a solar farm in the back off of Middle Road. And I guess I'd start by inviting Mr. Young, Town Planner, to come up and start by giving us some background on the project and where we are and what's going on.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Henry Young, Town Planner. Thanks for having me here tonight. Just a little background on how we got to this point. Ground-mounted solar arrays are permitted by use in all districts of the town. In the fall of 2018, Kiersage, the developer of the subject ground-mounted solar array, entered into an agreement with the Catinos, which enabled Kiersage to design and build a ground-mounted solar array on the Catino property. The array is located in a former bog, and it's in a pretty isolated location. So that permitted use requires a special permit. So following a public hearing, which is facilitated by the Planning Board, the special permit was approved in December of 2018 and signed in January of 2019 following an appeal period. Then, in the spring, during construction oversight is provided by the Building Inspector. The, I think, the important modification to the plan and modifications are permitted under the purview of the Building Inspector. He has the authority to do that. The plan was modified from the lines which carry power from the site up to the street from a pole-mounted to a ground-mounted system. It's my understanding that that request was made at the request and accommodating the request of the Learys who are here today. As a result, there were, let's see, although the cables are buried, there's a need for three boxes, which are, you know, I would call them cabinets. And there's a requirement for three of those cabinets, which Kiersage has offered to, or I think will offer to, provide screening, which would be a standard situation. So there was an issue, I think others here might be able to speak more succinctly to it, but there was an issue of did the Kiersage actually have the right to pass through an easement that went along the property of the Learys? So there was a court case, and it's my understanding that the court found in favor of Kiersage that they could, in fact, continue with the placement of the utilities underground in accordance with the plan that they had produced, in which the Building Inspector had seen approved. So that gets us here to today. Any questions beyond that?
No, I don't, no, I don't think so. I don't go anywhere. All right. I guess I would defer next to Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
How to present him. Mr. Gomes provided some materials, and he's objecting to the, objecting to the project and provided some materials in response to his objection. And just, you know, I'll preface the, your presentation with the fact that I think the Board of Selectmen has little authority over this. I'm told that our only jurisdiction is if there's a matter of public safety, and beyond that, we don't have a lot of control or influence over what's done here. So that's my understanding. If it turns out I'm wrong, I'm sure somebody will tell me that. I've reviewed all the materials you provided, cover letter dated November 25th, and a lot of supporting materials. So with that, to you, Mr. Gomes. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Select Board. I want to thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight. My client, Deborah Leary, is present here today. She's the property owner on Middle Road, on the property in dispute. I'd like to tender to you a copy of the memorandum in order issued by the Land Court Judge Foster in the plaintiff's emergency motion for preliminary injunction. I do have three copies, but let me just start by tendering two.
That wasn't in the materials?
That was not in the materials. My intent in requesting this original meeting was to inform the Board of what I believe was an improper special permitting process and, at a minimum, a reality issue for any person who were in town, who's a resident, who would be surprised, shell-shocked by the delivery of heavy machinery with contractors telling them that there is going to be a 30-by-10-foot structure in their backyard made of metal and concrete.
Three of those or one of them?
I'll explain.
Okay.
So here, the dispute is not that Kiersage has the rights to use the easement from Verizon and N-Star. The issue is, and the dispute is, they are overextending their right to use that easement from a single, well, we are claiming a single-wire utility to a fully-upgraded, substantial solar facility. Now, the use of the easement, and the problem is the fact that they are proposing to put a, as I said, the 30-by-10-foot area on my client's property. Now, this dispute, or this easement is in regards to what is known as Parker's Lane, 1,000-foot right-of-way from Middle Road to the Catinos property. Now, the judge's decision on the injunction is to halt, or the proposal was to halt the work. My client was seeking to stop Kiersage so we could see what the issue is. I'm going to point you to the bottom of page nine and then carry on to page 10. As you will see on page nine, the judge is making a preliminary decision. This is not a final decision. We are set for a conference on the 16th of this month, and we're going to continue on towards trial. On the bottom of page nine, the relative language reads, "The shed the property owner placed on the property during the weekend of November the 2nd and 3rd, 2019 can be relocated somewhere else on the property. Even if it is ultimately determined that Kiersage has no right to place the pad in the proposed location, it can be removed. The harm to the property owners of leaving the pad on the property for a short amount of time is far outweighed by the risk of irreparable harm to Kiersage of not completing the project." And then the last paragraph on page 10, it reads, "The findings and rulings contained herein are necessarily preliminary in nature. Thus, these findings and rulings are neither intended nor should they be construed as having precedential weight or effect in further proceedings in this case, all of which shall be determined in the light of the evidence offered and admitted on these occasions." The importance of this is, the judge was looking.
Whose shed are we talking about?
This is a shed that my client installed on her property in the disputed 30-by-10-foot area. And there's a picture of it, I believe, attached.
She put a new shed, she?
That is correct. If you look at the next page, Mr. Cabral, you'll see the.
Yeah, I've got a picture of it.
Picture of the shed in that disputed area. Now, the judge was basing his decision off of the competing interests of this small shed versus this large solar panel facility going forward. The judge exercised his discretion and said, "During the pendency of this proceeding, we're going to let Kiersage continue with their building of this solar panel facility. But in the event that my client is correct, that they are trespassing beyond this easement, they are overusing that easement, Kiersage is going to be responsible for the removal of all of the construction according to the judge's order." So I do not want you to approach this thinking the judge already made their decision, and thus your decision is easier. I am a public officer here in the town of Acushnet. I have a conflict of interest that would prevent me from putting forth a claim against the town, for example, of not following the special permit process, not providing my client with notice of that special permit, not providing my client of, not providing my client with notice of any other ancillary meetings, such as the poll hearing or the underground conduit hearing. Now, I don't know what is going on with the town's mailbox system, but I do know Ms. Leary has not received notice of the December 2018 special permit, as well as the Eversource conduit, which went forth, I believe it was November 15th of this year.
October 29th, I believe.
October 29th.
That was an accidental oversight.
I understand, but the pattern of not getting these important notices is causing my client distress here. Now, what we are looking at is, my client does not want this structure in their back. Now, the legal reason why this should not go forward is the fact that my client did not receive notice of the special permitting process. My client learned that this structure was being placed on her yard on October 27th, when Kiersage and its officials met with my client and I on the site. This was the first time that we received a copy of the plan that is attached to the judge's order. This plan is not included in the plan that was submitted to the Planning Board and approved by the Planning Board.
Is the, just question, when you say that the structure they're constructing is on your client's land, is it on the easement or on your client's land? Those are two different things.
So here, the easement is along Parker's Lane. It's the language that the judge focuses on. It's the exact language of the easement at the Registry of Deeds, along Parker's Lane. So here, Kiersage is attempting to abut this structure as close to the Parker's Lane as possible, so that they can say, "This concrete structure, although it juts out 30 by 10 feet, it's still along the easement." So there's the issue that it is, our first claim is that it is encroaching beyond what is allowed on the easement, the physical measurements.
Couldn't the surveyor determine whether it's, I mean, easement's, easement should be a known quantity, right?
So here, the.
Mr. Gaspar has a question.
My client has engaged the assistance of a surveyor, and it is going to go forward for use with the Land Corps. Kiersage will have a copy. They have their own engineers. But yes, the specifics of that measurement are going to be determined and presented to the court. And that may change the decision on the injunction.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So one of my questions is, what is the actual width of the easement? Because I see that not in the deed.
So here, the varying width of Parker's Lane is anywhere at its shortest of 13 feet to 25 feet. Now, that is just the roadway, access, egress. But here, we're talking specifically about the utility. When utilities are not laid down, the court is going to making an analysis of reasonableness and its competing reasonableness. Is it reasonable for Kiersage to make improvements to its existing utility? It's still electricity going through the wires. But on my client's side, the reasonableness is, it's actually the unreasonableness of the effect of this change in the easement use is going to be adverse to my client in of such a significant and substantial manner that it will be found to be unreasonable. But that is going to be a decision for the court to make. What is important for the Board to consider here today in moving forward with its hearings is the fact of whether there was a municipal wrong or whether they need to make sure Kiersage is following the original special permit in the modifications they've submitted. Now, under the orders of conditions, I've cited six issues I see with them, with the most important ones being, the nearest residence is more than 750 feet away from the project area. That was correct at the time of submission because Kiersage did not intend to put a structure on my client's property as they are. The original plans before the Planning Board contained the utility poles along Parker's Lane. This change.
Question, why did they move from utility poles to underground utilities?
My understanding that the poles were changed to the underground conduit as a means to appease my clients so that they did not have poles along the property line. But the true issue, Mr. Cabral, is those utility poles, as laid out in the plan, did not work in real life. There was a utility pole directly in the roadway that the Catinos would have difficulty accessing the property, and my client would not be able to use the turnabout, which is, it's an area between her driveway and the disputed Parker's Lane. There was a utility pole right in the middle. So I believe that is the true reason.
It was proposed, proposed utility pole was never constructed, it was proposed.
That is correct. And there are claims that my client agreed to this underground conduit. What I can say there is, potentially, my client did say, "Yes, I would rather have underground conduit than these utility poles." But my client did not know the important fact that this was going to result in a 30-by-10-foot structure in her backyard. That information was not conveyed to her until October 27th. Now, looking at, I did some research specifically for solar panels modifications. The closest I was able to find was March 15th of 2016 in the town of East Freetown. Here, there was a public hearing on Marie's Way for a new modification. Specifically, they were modifying a location of the equipment. This is the transformer, switch. Interestingly, in Freetown, they were moving this equipment further away from the road, further away from Marie's Way, and more importantly, further away from the properties across the street. So here's a neighboring town looking at a similar issue, and the finding is, this equipment is moved further away across the streets. Also, in this Marie's Way hearing, March of 2016, they increased the megawatts of this solar panel, nominal 5.3 to 5.5. Now, I have raised issue with the Kiersage project having 1.9 megawatts in November, December of 18, and then following forward when the building permit is applied for three. The response that I've received is, this is just a calculation between AC and DC. I have not found that answer from an expert to agree with Kiersage, but I imagine if Freetown is looking at a 0.2 increase and putting it before the Planning Board, again, for the modification, I think the town of Acushnet should consider having the Planning Board review an increase from 1.9 to 2.83. Excuse me. Now, it's my understanding that Kiersage is reasoning for putting the equipment pad where it is is because of public safety, because whenever Source gets an emergency call, they need to see it from the street. In Freetown, on Marie's Way, there was no issue of moving the equipment further away. I don't see why there would be an issue here. But what I find surprising with Kiersage's claim that it needs to be visible is, why could we not just move it across Parker's Way, not on my client's property, on the other side of the easement, where it would still be considered along the easement? Now, I believe the public safety that the Board is being presented with is the safety of my client, who is a member of that public. Here, we are in the discovery processes of learning what this specific equipment is so that we can verify there are no further harms that need to be looked at. My client has diligently reviewed solar farms in the area, in town even, and she believes the noise that is emanated from these equipments, which are the switch connector.
The durability of the structure.
Is a humming noise. And this humming noise can be heard from, I believe it was 300 feet away, where the one that she visited in town. But here, this is 200 feet from her backyard, back door.
I mean, is the objection, I mean, there's a lot of points, Mr. Gomes. Is the objection, the placement of the 30-by-10-foot building, or there are other objections? I know you're raising other points as to the potential expansion of what was proposed versus what's being built, and we'll get precise to respond to that certainly, but is the principal objection with the location of that structure or are there other objections?
The principal objection is that the equipment pad, as it is referred to, is within 200 feet of my client's house. It is going to.
It's going to be visible.
It's going to have that nuisance factor, but it also will have the added problems of decreasing her property value, limiting her potential future development of the site subdivision and otherwise. So it is multifaceted, but the main issue is, when we're in discussions for three, four months with Kiersage, and then suddenly, one day after we meet, there's a deployment of heavy machinery for the installation of this pad that was not on the original plans, that were just received notice of, we needed to pump the brakes. And as the governing body, I wanted the Select Board to know so that maybe something can be done to limit this issue for Ms. Leary, but ultimately, so that this happens to no resident in the town of Acushnet, and that fair notice and due process is allowed.
Is it, is it your belief also that the structure's being located on her property and not in the easement? Is that?
Yes, and that is of the nature of trespass, trespassing onto the property.
Other, I'm gonna, I think what I'm gonna do is we'll go to Kiersage, then we'll go back to Mr. Young, but are there any other questions of Mr. Gomes before we bring Kiersage up?
I think I have, I don't know that yet, but I would have questions.
And we can start, you start, all right. So why don't we, Mr. Gomes, we'll go to Kiersage and their representative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Loliberte. I'm here on behalf of Kiersage, I'm counsel to Kiersage and representative, excuse me, in the Land Court action and in discussions with Mr. Gomes and Leary. I think the fundamental question that Mr. Cabral raises, has there been any issue raised as to any public safety issues before this Board? And I haven't heard any. But the fundamental question is, is what is the easement and what the rights are of Kiersage, Eversource under the easement? And I think there's some things I want to clarify on that. What the judge found, and Judge Foster is a Land Court judge, which specializes in Land Court issues, and that's why we purposely filed there, to have somebody that knew of land law and easements and the like, to adjudicate this issue because it was time-sensitive. And the judge took the unusual step of actually visiting the site on a night, or a day not unlike today, and walked the site and inspected it, and after that, issued this decision. And what is key here, and I don't quibble with Mr. Gomes's meaning of the final part of the order, but it is a preliminary injunction. And in Massachusetts, to obtain a preliminary injunction, not only do the, my clients have to show that they will be irreparably harmed, but they have to show that they're willing to likelihood of success on the merits of the case. So the judge has found, I think that Kiersage, after reviewing the facts and inspecting the property, they have the better of the arguments relative to this easement. And on the easement itself, it is not bound by, it's a very broad easement, let me put it that way. It's not defined in terms of meets and bounds like you would sometimes think, and it's necessarily set on a plan. What it says is, it's across a piece of property adjacent to the lane, period. And it's, under Massachusetts law, that affords a very broad use by utilities and the like. It's not an unstandard type of easement granted to utilities, because they need the ability to move things over time. Utilities obviously evolve over time and the like, in uses for roadways and that. So the court found in the decision that there was not an overburdening of the easement. So insofar as Mr. Gomes was articulating that, what is happening here is that there is a change in use, that is somehow there is a commercial solar facility. The court found, no, that is not in violation of the easement, it's not an overburdening of the easement insofar as that is concerned, and more importantly, that Kiersage, Eversource have the ability to do exactly what they're doing under the easement, period. Now, insofar as what is being done, it is more actually a public safety benefit for Kiersage installing at considerable cost underground lines. If you know the area, it's lots of trees and weather could take down lines. These are going to be underground, so we won't have any concerns relative to trees falling down or any type of winds or electrical outages. But it's also in coordination with Eversource, which has required the placement of these pads so that they can be in a proximity in the event of bad weather, that a crew having to service a line or having to do some type of electrical equipment can view or see the boxes from a public way in some way, shape, or form. So that is a public benefit, that is what is occurring here. And I think Mr. Gomes admitted that why we went down this road ultimately was at the request of Ms. Leary to not do the poles and install something that was less impactful on her property. And the other thing I wanted to go through was, there's no change in scope of what is occurring relative to the wattage or amounts. The plans right before, the Planning Board, it is a, and there is an expert affidavit that's in the Land Court that sets forth that it's literally a difference in, a number of conversions, I'm not an electrical engineer and I couldn't do the math for you, but it's a difference between AC and DC current, period. And there is no change in impact or scope of the project based upon that.
Mr. Gaspar.
You make that, you make that comment, but I looked at the plans, the original plans that were voted on by the Planning Board, and there were 7,000, just over 7,000, what they call modules. And then the new plan has 10% more, roughly 7,700 modules on the new plan. So how's that, how's that factor? How can that be off AC and DC by 10%? They're talking 7, 800 modules.
May I answer?
Sure.
Sure. So the AC wattage is what Eversource allows you to build the project on, and depending on what the inverters are on, the DC size can change, but the difference really is what size panels you are using. So you can use 7,000 panels at 440 watts, or you can use 7,700 panels at smaller watts. So the actual wattage, DC of this project, so DC is what on two hours during a day, the maximum output you can get. Eversource allows you only so much AC, which is what can go back on the line. So.
So we haven't changed at all. The maximum it is, is 2.8 megawatts DC, and EverSource wouldn't allow us to connect at more than the 1.9-
1994.
1994 AC. So we haven't changed anything, and we can't. EverSource gives us, we signed an agreement, we spent four and a half years studying this project, working with the Cutinos, because EverSource had changed so many different things in the line. So this is a significant upgrade to their substation to put all the different pieces together. So that's-
So the size, you're saying the size of the modules from the original plan changed to smaller modules, and that's why you could add more modules?
Yes, exactly.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. You proposed, I believe, 1.9 megawatts originally.
AC, AC, but you can step up the AC to DC.
Yeah, go ahead. Let me just, before you speak, I'm gonna show you what was presented to the planning board, and this might explain.
Is this proposed to the planning board on the original date of the public hearing?
Yep, yep. If you look here, that is 1.9 AC.
Pretty small, isn't it?
Well, this is, this is a copy for renovation purposes, and for the plans that were submitted are bigger. But if you see the 2.8 for the AC and DC, you see what you're quoting.
So, Mr. Gasper, the thing is, we don't know what size panels you can buy until you get closer. So when we originally put it in, EverSource requires us to put in what's called a single-line diagram, which shows that. So we haven't changed that at all, but as-
How about the total land area being covered? Is that the same?
Exactly the same.
So this land area being used, so your panel counts change?
Exactly.
But the land area covered's the same?
Yeah, there was some of these space, they had some roads in one subsection, there was two blocks. So I looked at the plans, and say the roads ended here, they added like a little piece in that one, and then like one long strip in the back one for the additional. It's a lot of panels, I mean, 800, you have to admit, 800 modules is a lot. I mean, it's 10%.
Yeah, so-
So there's some variation there that, I mean, I think that when you go in front of a planning board, you say, that's like somebody saying, I'm gonna build a three-bedroom house, and then, oh, you know, I put a four-bedroom house, because I shrunk the size of my bedrooms. It's not allowed, right? I mean, you're building permit, and the plans say it's a three-bedroom house, the building inspector goes out and it's a four-bedroom house, I don't think it's allowed. So it's just, it's one of those things I think needs to be clarified. I don't know if the planning board fully understands the whole concept between AC and DC when you're approving these plans. Henry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, I know there's some difference that'll be there, but 10% seems to be a pretty wide margin of error.
Can I just address that point? If you're using the analogy of bedrooms from a house, the number of bedrooms as proposed by this project is represented by the wattage that's set forth in that plan. There's no change. There's no increased bedrooms, period. There's a number of panels that have been increased, but that's not what was, that's what's allowed, and that's what is being installed. So there's not, there's not, I understand your thought process, but I think it's not equivalent, because the bedrooms, if you will, is not-
1.9 megawatts is 1.9 megawatts, in my opinion. It's not 2.3 or 2.4 or 2.5 megawatts, it's 1.9 megawatts. Regardless of how many modules that takes to make up 1.9 megawatts, it's still 1.9 megawatts, in my opinion, so. I'll use a different analogy if it makes things a little more clarity for everybody, but when you go in front of the planning board and you propose a project of 1.9 megawatts, shouldn't it be 1.9 megawatts?
Under AC or DC?
I don't know, you tell me.
I'm saying they're equivalent.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, Mr. Gasper, I think the concept you're missing is, so the 1.9 megawatts hasn't changed, and that's 1.9 megawatts AC. And so when we filed for the project, we're held by the utility to two things, the megawatts AC and the number and type of inverters, okay? So the inverters, say it's a 1-megawatt inverter, it'll spit out 1-megawatt AC. You can probably put up to 2-megawatts DC in that inverter, and it'll only ever spit out 1-megawatt AC. So we have enough inverters for 1.9 megawatts AC, and we planned out, say, 390-watt modules. So we needed a certain amount of 390-watt modules, which say got us to 2.7 DC, still spitting out 1.9 AC. When we went to buy modules, there's no 390s available, we had to buy 330s. So we buy 330s. We try to get as close to that DC size as we can, we might be plus or minus, but because the wattage is smaller, the amount of modules grew. But regardless, on the other side of that inverter, it's still 1.9 AC.
That Henry was making building on your analogy, it's like going from a queen bed to two twins, because we haven't increased the, it's just-
I understand, I understand.
It's pretty, it's pretty common with facilities, because we're limited, and then depending on if there's any tariffs, availability, but we're limited by how much wattage can go on the line is AC. So there's a conversion, so the sunlight comes in as DC, it then comes in through an inverter, and then it goes to basically AC, and then it stepped up through the transformer and put back on the line. So the line that's going back is really AC.
To the principal objection raised by the property owner, is the location that is 30 by 10 structures going on, is that the only place that can go? Is there a good reason for it being there and not across the road, I think was the request?
We have vetted different locations for this, and it is, under the circumstances and in what is necessary, it's the only practicable place for the placement of these pads, period. Given what the timing of the project is, the requirements of EverSource, the requirements of the project, and also the, to the extent there's been an argument that it should be placed across the street on town land, that's burdened by a conservation restriction. And if that was to be presented as an alternative, that would require an act of the Massachusetts legislature to have that change made at this point, and that's effectively, you know, would kill the project.
Can I, can I just- Yeah, go ahead. Has Mr. DeRoch had a question?
So I was gonna say that we spent months with EverSource. I was down there, our technical team was down there, we looked at everything we could do. We offered, when the land court judge, to move it closer, to put it behind the existing, they have a big barn structure, we can pull it closer to the road, but there's a couple issues in terms of, one, safety, that you can't put it on a main road, EverSource will never allow that. And two, is that the step up, when you get too far away, you're gonna have some issues with the voltage, and that becomes something that's dangerous. So they won't allow you. But this is not a 130-foot pad, this is three separate pads. And the height of them is about, one is four and a half, one is five feet, and they're on concrete. So the length from end to end is about 30 feet. That's absolutely correct, but it's not 130-foot concrete pad and separate. We can put landscaping in, we said we'll put landscaping, we had offered to pay some money way back to the Learys. We said we could move them closer to the street, but that was the maximum amount, and Tom, when he went down there, had shown the plan to the Learys, to Debbie, and said, hey, this is, is this a good place? And this was approved as a place where we could put the structures. But we went through so many different, I can only tell you with EverSource, it's taken us four and a half years to get where we are today, and unfortunately, we're at the end of the limit because of many timing issues, as Mr. Leibertay pointed out too. But we'd be happy to pull it closer to the street, but you also need to protect it. And one of the other issues is there's some confusion, there's no noise from this at all. That's a transformer, there's no transformers here. This is three pieces of equipment that make zero noise. Switch gear-
Zero?
Zero noise.
Okay. Mr. DeRoch.
Yes. Because I was, I went up to the site today, and I saw that the rapport goes from where it's gonna go on the ground, all the way out to the solar farm array, through the woods, cut through. And so that's one observation I made, as well as, I see where the, well, they're not transformers, there's switching-
Switch here.
There's a meter, a recloser-
And a switch.
Yeah, and a load brake.
I'm just hung up that, there's no other place across the way, this easement that exists on Parker Lane, it has no land area on the left side of it, because as they travel toward the solar farm, so the border of the road is the edge of her property.
We had that survey.
We had a whole survey, with the title and the book and title where it'd been registered, we looked at all of this, we went back and checked it, because Debbie had said, no, this isn't recorded. We went back, we pulled up the recorded plan, we checked with a surveyor, we went through all of it, but we walked this up and down to try to put it on the other side of the road, to try to do everything possible, and had nothing to do with our costs, but there was no other place we could put it except for on that side. But we could move it closer-
To Middle Road.
To Middle Road, and hide it behind the barn, and we offered this up, and it would cost us more money, but this is something we could do.
And when you, when you say that, you mentioned that you need to see this, these switches from a public way. Do you mean Middle Road, or do you mean Parker Lane?
Middle Road. Parker Lane's private, but EverSource says if there's ever an emergency, they need to be able to have a visible sight on these, so they can get there if they're coming off onto a private road, if there's ever an issue with trees coming down or whatever it may be.
So Kierssage is saying this cannot be moved at all, and the resident wants it moved somewhere else. Is that like, is that a way for me to, you know-
We're saying there's certain constraints to where you can move it. We can't move it farther down Parker Lane towards the Cutinos.
Because you won't be able to see it from Middle Road, or it's-
And, and because the protection schemes are engineered, and we're so late in the year, there's not enough time to re-engineer that without, like, months of delays and a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
And then-
We don't know if EverSource would approve.
Yeah, we don't know if it would get approved anyway because of the visibility issue, and then moving to the opposite side of the road, it's a conservation restriction, because that would've been plan number one.
And I also don't want to lose sight of the fact, is, yes, that the landowner who is, owns the property that's burdened by the easement, doesn't want this to occur. I understand that. But the Cutinos have the benefit of that easement, as does EverSource and Kierssage, and the court has determined what is being proposed as is, is permitted. And if you, Kierssage has made every effort to not be in this position, not be in land court, and, and we would prefer not to be here. But at the end of the day, it is permitted, and we've tried to make reasonable accommodations to deal with that, and actually, the land court, in essence, found that in its, in its decision. So it's, in determining who's impacted negatively relative to what's going forward, it's, I don't want the board to lose sight of the Cutinos, and it's something that will benefit them in terms of what is going on relative to their property as well.
Oh, Mr. Gasper, a quick question.
Who's, we're gonna just call them transformers, and shut offs, and everything else, okay? Because it doesn't seem like anybody knows exactly what's going on on these pads. All I know is it's a 34 by 10 concrete slab that's gonna be in somebody's backyard, whatever side you're shaking your head, whatever it is. I got an email saying it's 34 feet, five by five by five by five by five, so who cares, right? It's 10 feet, 34 feet long, that's what my email says. Ms. Hebert had a meeting with all you folks, and it's 34 feet, right, in length, doesn't really matter. Nobody wants this thing in their backyard. So let me just ask a simple question. Who owns, who ultimately owns the transformers, switches, whatever, that's gonna be on the pads? Who, in the end, will own that transformer?
EverSource owns two out of three of the equipment there, and will own one.
So when I look at the deed for the easement, Kierssage is not named in there, how do you have permission to put something in an easement? That easement doesn't say Kierssage, it gives the, actually, it's, this thing's so old, and I think its original intent was to allow the Cutinos to construct a home back there, never solar farms, but this thing, this thing says, some place, it says, the deed says New England Telephone and Telegraph Company, that's all that easement is. So the easement was, is given by them, and then they're grantors, right? So EverSource then bought, must've bought through Con Edison and everything else, the chain of command, when they buy, they retain that easement right, right? Not Kierssage, or anybody else. It's only for EverSource. So how is Kierssage putting something within an easement that they're not allowed to do it? Can you explain that?
Sure. Secondly, Kierssage is not installing, it's actually EverSource that's going to be actually doing the labor and doing the install. Secondly, there's an interconnect or connecting agreement that, under which EverSource allowed Kierssage to connect to its utility purposes. So, one, to address the issue of who's doing what, it's EverSource that's actually doing this, so it's the entity that has the benefit or the owner of the actual easement that's doing the work. And this is no different than having EverSource have a subcontractor doing work to clear trees or do something along those lines.
Sure. So, but they're physically, they're not permanently installing something on somebody else's property, correct? Or on the easement? Because they don't have the right to, because if EverSource doesn't own it, I can't just go put something and say it's, because it's got electrical, I can't just say that's, that's another source's easement, even though I own it.
I, I, I-
Let me ask you, let me ask you another question, because you referenced the property that I was gonna reference, that's under the Akushinet Haven Land Trust, and you keep saying you're under time constraints, and I understand what time constraints, because you're trying to get federal grants and government money for the project to meet a certain deadline. That's not anybody's problem but your own. When you started this project, you should have a timeline that was reasonable to meet to get these benefits. Has anyone from the company of EverSource ever contacted, ever contacted the Akushinet Haven Land Trust to ask them permission to line poles on this side of that roadway? And what was the response by the Akushinet Haven Land Trust?
We met them, and we met with, who was it, Tom Lewis, was it there?
Oh, the landlord.
Right. No, no, not the landlord, the Fish and Wildlife. Yeah, Fish and Wildlife, and they said absolutely not.
It's the, the nature of a construction, conservation restriction is that you literally can't do anything, cut trees, anything, except for maintain existing infrastructure if it's there, without an act of the state legislature.
But they gave, they, because it became, the way they were able to come up with the money to take this, they had to give an easement to the state Fish and Wildlife. So we met with them, and we had EverSource involved, EverSource talked to them, we tried everything possible.
It's such a small parcel of land, I have such a hard time believing that this is true.
We walked, we walked down, I was there myself.
It's such a small piece of land, it's right on the side of the road, we're not hurting turtles or squirrels or anybody else.
I gotta tell you-
It's scrub, it's scrub.
Let me ask, let me ask Mrs. Leary a question. Mrs. Leary, if you don't mind?
No, not at all.
Mr. Gomes, could I ask your client a question?
Please do.
So it seems that we didn't want telephone poles going directly from the solar farm all the way to Middle Road, in your opinion, because of trees being cut down and things of that nature. And as far as the argument goes, that public safety, that we're gonna put underground utilities for only 300 of the feet up off Middle Road, and then we're gonna continue with poles, this tree's all the way up that road, so the trees are a factor all the way up, so that, that argument for public safety doesn't lie well with me at all. Let me ask you this question, Mrs. Leary. Would you rather have them now, knowing that this, this pad and these transformers or switches or whatever, where your grandchildren and everything else might be playing around in your backyard, because I know exactly where this is in your yard, I'm very familiar with your property, would you rather have them go back to telephone poles and line poles up the road? I mean, if they got poles coming 7,000, 700 feet down the road, what's the extra four or five telephone poles gonna do any harm? I would think that poles would probably be better than this alternative that we're talking about.
Right. So originally, when they came to me with the plan, with the poles, I think they had like six or seven poles at the beginning of that easement. And you know that the easement in my driveway are less than five feet apart. When I met with Mr. Holt, he showed me that piece of paper with the poles, and that's when I said, you're kidding me, right? Because you're putting poles now less than two feet from my garage, and in my turnaround with my, with a basketball court is. So what my first response I got was, part of the easement. But, right. So I was like, absolutely not. There's, you're, you can't, even though you may say it's part of the easement, I still have the right to enjoy my property. And when you change that, it's an overburdenment of my right. So I raised holy heck with them, and they said to me, we got it, we're going underground. Excellent, go underground. No mention of that pad, nor was there mention of that pad when they came to you guys for the approval. That never came up until October, October 27th or 28th. They misled the lead, the planning board, way back when, if they were in contact with EverSource for the past four years, EverSource never brought that up as well. Eversource for the past four years, Eversource never brought that up as well, this is insane.
As an alternative.
As an alternative, they waited till the last minute to get a resident who they know they're gonna try to bully, because most residents can't afford to fight the fight. So this was a tactic, to wait till the very last moment and threaten me with lawsuits? Because I have a constitutional right to protect my property? If this was part of the plan, four years ago, they have misled the town of Akushnet, they did not tell anybody that that plant, that pad was going there, now I have visited several locations, those boxes are at 600 feet away from the road, in a locked, contained area, you can't see them from the road, had to stand up on top of a hill to take... Listen, I have no problem, they wanna put telephone poles, they can put them up on top of the hill and run the underground conduit, running the underground conduit, as I seen from other facilities, they run, it's all underground to the poles, one of the poles is more than 150 feet away from the road, now why is it that some, some solar farms facilities make it work without burdening any of the residents? And then you have a solar company come in, I don't want the project to stop, I want Charlotte and Donald to have their, to have their solar farm, but I don't want my property to lose tremendous amount of value because of high attention wires, or so-called boxes, how am I ever gonna tell somebody who is buying my property, don't worry about it, they don't have EMFs, or cancer-causing radiation coming out of it, or the humming noise that I hear every time I go, I even recorded one on Wing Lane, and I was over 35 feet away on a windy day, and you could hear that.
Responses to any of those?
Sure, I think with all due respect, I think Debbie's bringing up some good points, or Mrs. Leary, sorry, but this is not the equipment we have. What she's talking about is fenced in, is transformers, these are not transformers, the equipment that's being put there is the same equipment that's all over town, you'll find, and they are locked boxes by code, and they do not make noise, one, two, is that we put them as close to the road as possible, so the total width is not 10 feet long, it's, there's gonna be probably about four feet of the pad, and there'll be space behind it and space in front of it, so what's really happening here is for code, we're gonna have three bullards, or not, several bullards, which, you know, those are the heavy metal poles, so cars can't hit into them, which will be on the side of the road, there'll be an open space, you can open the doors, there'll be these cabinets, which is a good description for them, which they absolutely are, they're all over town, and then on the other side will be open space, and we would do everything possible, it's costing us probably $65,000 or more to put them underground.
You can't move this whole setup further away from...
From her house.
From her house.
Why can't you go another 100 feet up the, up the road, 100 feet? I mean, that's, that, I know where this is, I seen where she put the shed, it's right behind, on the side of her garage, it's very close to her house, I mean, she has children, her family comes over, I mean, really, would you want this in your yard, ask yourself this question, sir, would you want this on the side of your garage at any cost? Would you want it?
I could, I could tell you this.
Would you want, answer the question, yes or no, please?
I wouldn't care, because I have them near me down in Rhode Island.
Down the road?
No, down in Rhode Island, I have, I have the same things, I am next to a box and a pole on the corner of my property, I don't have it, because where I live up in Boston, it's underground where I am, so it is underground conduits, we're putting down conduits, you won't see anything, there's gonna be one pole that will be put on town land, one underground conduit, which is, this is being done by Verizon, that's town land, that's the only pole that's going up there, I agree with everything you've said, we're doing everything possible to move it, we, if we could, we would love to move it down another 100 feet, it will cost more money, but we would love to do it, but we can't, the whole thing...
Back to why you can't, please?
Eversource won't allow it, we called up Eversource, I was on the call myself, and I said, do you think if we move this down, what flexibility?
And why, why no, why no?
Because, because it's, Eversource has their policies, and one of the issues is...
I'm not an Eversource fan, so let's start with that, so let's start with that.
Well, so then, but the whole thing is, what we studied, we didn't study the design, the design is always done at the end of the project, what Eversource does is, we studied what's gonna be at the substation, the upgrade of the lines, and how much is put on the lines, that's completely separate, that's what took four years, there were other projects, one of the major issues why Eversource likes these projects is we're paying for an upgrade of the whole substation, as part of the project.
So, let's go back to the original, so you spent all this time planning, and you went in front of the planning board, and you didn't have things on the plan for the planning board at the public hearing, or for our residents in a butters, to object, to let the planning board know there's opposition to the project, and then it could've been rectified back then, when you were presenting the plans, and I came in as a resident, say, pretend I'm Mrs. Leary, and I came in and I said, well, what about these poles, and you're not putting all those, and the planning board would've listened to that as a town entity, and said, you know what, she's right, we have to, we have to look at alternatives to the poles, and then you say, okay, six months later, you put this cockamamie-ing thing on her property, and she's like, hey, no, if you would've put that on the original plan, that's what you did, because I looked at the original plans that were approved, and none of this was on original plans, so if you would've done your job, and the engineers would've done their job, and put things on the original plans at the public hearing, people would've had an opportunity to express their concerns to the planning board, and there may have been objection from the planning board to allow this project to go through, you didn't provide planning board with enough information, sir.
Okay, so can I answer that, that's just not correct, with the planning board, we went in with the plan, and we stayed with the poles, that was part of it, the way it works when you do these in designs with Eversource, if we had Eversource, we did exactly what the town said us to do for notification, we notified everyone there, we presented the plans, we can talk about it, anyone who was there at the meeting had comments, there's another solar project that's been approved in town as well, that was approved right before us, and we went through all of it, we did exactly our job, this is common, we've done 24 solar projects, and one of the things is, this is a minor change that Eversource looks at, Eversource changes it at the end, now absolutely, it's a change, but it's a heck of a lot better than four poles, so I agree with you, if we can move it, back to your question, Mr. Cabral, if we could move it 100 feet back, we would, we wouldn't be spending all this time, I'm not being obstinate, I would like to do it.
Is the Eversource objection based on mechanics, or is it based on Eversource being Eversource?
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
So, yeah, so when we start, the poles that were shown on the plan that was presented at the planning board, that was our intention the whole time, Eversource doesn't finalize their design until a lot later, so in this case, they finalized their design, they said, okay, you wanna put your poles here, let's check it out, so then we had to survey it, we surveyed it, and we found out that the rock wall there is the property line, so we said, okay, let's talk to these people on the other side, it was the Fairhaven Akushnet Land Trust, and so we met with them, and they said, no, you can't do anything over here, we've got this conservation restriction, so then we started talking to Ms. Leary, and that's how we got in this situation, through a bunch of iterations, tried to find something that worked.
But we met with Eversource for six months.
Right.
I mean, this is Eversource, this isn't us not doing our job, believe me, I'm on top of every damn detail on this project, and I know, because I've done a lot of these, and we met with Eversource, I personally called, one guy was out, he had hit replacement surgery, I know every single person and what happened is part of it, because I wanted to try to accommodate, and we looked at the easement, we went back and forth, and Mrs. Leary said, no, that's wrong, so we went back and we looked at the survey again, she said, no, it's not recorded, we showed that it'd been recorded as part of it, if we could move it 100 feet back, we would, but I think, to go back to your other question, Mr. Gasper, we, we're gonna, we would be happy to put trees, you won't be able to see this at all, this is not a 20-foot structure.
How far is this from the, from the home, how far is it from the home?
Approximately 200 feet.
From the house.
From the house.
It's less than 50 feet from my barn, and it's a workshop, it's a workshop.
Yeah, I've not been out to see it.
These switches have no covering, they're just a box, it's not a structure, like you have to go around and put a roof on it, it's gonna be 12 feet high.
It's about four and a half feet, it's a cabinet, it's about this way, you see it in town, we could paint them any color, we could try to do anything possible, we'll put trees that are seven or eight feet high, we'll start with trees, you know, sometimes people put in trees and say it's gonna grow, we'll put in, and we'll start with a complete screening, so you can't see any of it, and we're not gonna be, we're trying to get this as tight on the road, so some of it will be on the side of the road.
Could you give us another example of where we could see something similar to what, you say they're all over town, give you an example of...
Doug, the common green boxes, if you drive around a lot of cities, they paint them, they have artists paint them, it's that type of box, and these ones are...
Can you think of a location, I mean, other than me driving around looking for one?
We can find one for you.
Fine.
We can send pictures.
Give me an example, I just wanna know what we're talking about.
Yeah, we'll find a location for you.
Yeah, it's often on like street corners.
We can find a location for you by tomorrow, 10 or 11.
Okay. Just send me, I'd like to, let me go and see it, I'll just...
Thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
Excuse me, can I just say something? So, these green boxes that they're talking about, I drove all over Akushnet, I'm sorry, I've not seen any box that's six by six by six, or one that's four feet wide and 10 feet long, that is the equipment list that they gave us, that went before the judge in Land Court, now, in court, they're returning, told the judge that these boxes were no bigger than washing machines, that is why the judge came down, because the question the judge asked was, then why do you need a 34 by 10-foot pad for three boxes that are no bigger than a washing machine? When we met with Mr. Bernstein on the end of October with the Cortinos, that is when I found out about the pad, and he told me the pad was five by five, with three little boxes no bigger than your, higher than you need, and I then said to him, well, we would like to know what the equipment is, we need the plan, and go from there, the, what we got from them was 34 by 10, so that changed, misleading once again.
There's a lot of spacing between the three boxes.
Sure, still taking up a lot of my property.
I'm just trying to understand, yeah, I'm trying to understand.
And then the equipment pad, 75 by 75, well...
What's 75 by 75?
Six feet.
What's 75 by 75?
Oh, 75 inches?
The size of the box, the size of the boxes.
75 inches?
Inches, not high.
Six feet.
Oh, okay.
And then a, then a 10 by 4, 10 feet long by 4, according to that list, so once again, even here today, what is proposed is not what you're hearing, or they're letting you hear, once again, it's the misleading, telling you one thing and doing something else.
Why is there so many poles, why, she's, when I asked her the question of if she would rather have poles now, as she understands that this grid thing's gonna be placed on her property, right, it's exclusive to her property, why does she say that there's a half dozen poles just in a, in the very near corner, what, I mean, telephone poles are...
There were gonna be four poles, and it has...
How long of a distance is four poles, so is it 400 feet, are they 100 feet apart, like most poles are, or is it 75 feet apart?
You've got the plan there that basically shows them, and a lot of the...
You don't know? Who are you, are you an engineer?
Sorry?
Are you the engineer?
No.
So, you don't know where the poles are?
No, it was on the original plan, what are you talking about?
Well, the plan is a little small and it's out of scale, I mean, I will say that.
Right, but, but that was the original one, but the poles that were put there, when Eversource does the final design, as Tom was saying, when they come out, they had issues with, basically, we sat there on the street and said, why can't we use the poles, why can't we get this down to one pole, and they said, we can't, because of the weight going back and forth on the poles, and more importantly, what's already on the poles, there is safety code and electrical regulations, they can't put so many wires on the pole, because there's already existing, what Mrs. Leary was talking about, the same voltage that's gonna go down the road already exists in front of her house, three-phase exists there.
Can I just mention one other thing, and I don't wanna... There's been a lot of assertions here as to misrepresentation, like, the court, Land Court was given exactly the dimensions, sat there, walked, and we saw what the, where the pad was going to be placed, has pictures and descriptions of what the boxes would look like, the exact dimensions, and made a determination that it was not going to overburden the easement, that it was permitted, and this is essentially, I understand the landlord's concerns, I'm sorry if she's disappointed this is going forward, but this is a private party dispute, and it deals with that which is dealing with rights and obligations under an easement, that, and the land court has already determined all of these issues and found the favor of Kierzaj, and we're willing to try to accommodate, and we're trying to act reasonably, and in fact, the court determined that we're acting reasonably under the circumstances, we're not unnecessarily overburdening Ms. Leary's property by what is currently being proposed.
The judge admits right here, Mr. Gomes gave us a piece of paper, it says, the shed property owner has placed on the property during the weekend, da-da-da-da-da, even if it is ultimately determined that Kierzaj has no right to place the pad in the proposed location, it can be removed, so he didn't make an ultimate determination technically.
Agreed, agreed, but by issuing the injunction, by issuing the injunction, he made a determination, we had a real, like, a successful merits, and if you look earlier in the decision, it goes on to say that we're not overburdening the easement, and if you look at pages...
Page eight.
Eight, seven, eight, one.
Okay, says the location which Kierzaj proposes to install the pad in, or is within utility easement, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, closing, because I'm, again, I'm not sure what our jurisdiction is here, so I'm just, closing comments here, I wanna go back to Mr. Young, because this sounds like this is a, this is a planning board issue, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna point at you, but any other comments from Board of Selectmen?
No, this time on the left side, I just think that the planning board is...
Can I just have one more question?
Yeah, one more, go.
If Eversource took four years to make this decision, then technically, the plans were never finalized, till just recently, should that have not have then gone back to the planning board?
Good segue, Mr. Young.
Because now, the actual Eversource has changed the plan.
Mr. Young, can I invite you back to the...
Oops.
Hold it, careful.
Thanks.
So...
Yes.
What are you gonna do, what, where do we go from here?
So, the...
Is this, is this something the planning board should reconsider, or do you believe that the project as it's progressing is in line with what the planning board proved?
I think that all, all the parties involved have acted in good faith, and I, I note that the, the plans, as they are reviewed by the planning board, often change during construction, and it falls under the purview of the building inspector to make the determination if a deviation is, is acceptable or not, per standards of, you know, health, safety, environmental...
Is this just the move from the four poles to the pad, a major deviation from what was in this?
I would have heard from the building inspector requesting another hearing, and that did not come up, in fact, the conversations that we had at department meetings, we...
Yeah, you did, you did sit, sit down two days ago.
Was that, we'd had conversations along the way, and it was, you know, being reviewed by the building inspectors, this, this is not a, like a nefarious act that was happening unbeknownst to the building inspector, or the Department of Public Works, so, you know, I think that all parties have been acting in good faith, I think the court has reviewed the case, so, I'm not a lawyer, but, you know, I think we have to exercise some caution about getting in the way of a, an approved court case.
You know, you say that about Mr. Merritt, the building commissioner, but I had a good conversation with Mr. Merritt, and he, and he doesn't agree with this transformer station being put where it was, he seemed to think, I asked him, I said, if it was your yard, would you like it, and he said, absolutely not, and I, he said he didn't really agree with this, so, he didn't agree with it, and now, you know, that's the problem with government, is sometimes things go around in circles and they change, and you know, I'm not saying anybody's here to be wrong, or who's here to be right, I just think that it's pretty bogus, that, you know, and the way I look at this, profits before people, and that's not acceptable, right, they have deadlines to me, I understand that, but this is a project they've claimed four years, so if they get a timeline for grants, so be it, it's not our problem, and I think that, you know, Ms. Leary was never even notified, she's the primary of butter, and she never got a notice at a public hearing, how the hell did this happen, that's, that's my problem, is, it just seems like the resident is just being ignored here, and that's, I think that's why the Board of Selectmen are trying to get to a conclusion of, how did this all happen, and why did this happen the way it happened, it just seems, a lot of things seem wrong to me, you know, and, and you know, I looked at the plans, and I said, you know, well, that was put in front of the planning board, and things do change, and, you know, to understand that, but I was also looking at the plan going, how could that happen, I mean, you have to be sitting down with Eversource going, hey, we're gonna put poles over here, and they're gonna be so far apart, and what happens if, you know, the poles ain't gonna work, and that should've been all right. But I, I was also looking at the plan going, how could that happen? I mean, you, you have to be sitting down with Eversource going, hey, we're going to put poles over here and they're going to be so far apart. And what happens if, you know, the poles ain't going to work? And that should have been all ironed out prior to the public hearing. And Eversource at the last minute making these kind of changes that could be detrimental to our resident is beyond me. I, I'm appalled at Eversource if that's what they did. I'm not so sure if that's what they did. But I'm appalled that they would actually do that to our planning board and say, hey, there is a significant change here and we're not going back to a public hearing because the project's been passed. And, and as much as I am for green energy and I was one of the founding members of the Board of Selectmen to, to have the Town of Kushtanet a green energy community, you know, not at anybody's expense, right? So, that's, that's my objection to this. It's sad that this has come about for this resident, it really is. Because I know, I would be, I, I consider Ms. Larry very calm because if this was me, I'd spend whatever money it took necessary to defeat this because it's not right to have somebody stick something in her backyard because of some 35-year-old easement that was the intent. Solar panels weren't even derived at 35 years ago. So there was never an intent for any commercial use back there. And if there was, you know.
What are the options, Mr. Young? So the building inspector, you think the building inspector's okay with this?
Uh, you know, the building inspector has not.
He apparently wasn't, was invited.
The building inspector's been very involved in the conversation and it's.
Yeah, there was a meeting a couple of days ago with the Kiersaj people, yeah.
And, and, you know, we looked at, we talked a lot about what we're discussing tonight. And we asked those questions, very hard questions to Kiersaj. Is there any way to, you know, modify this to better accommodate the Larrys? Because that was our interest as well. And I, I think we've, you know, one, one, I think misconception that now I fully grasp is, when I heard that this is a 30-foot by eight-foot by, you know, 10 feet tall Conex box type of structure, you know, then I thought, that's, that's pretty radical. But these are really three small cabinets. So, you know, it's the location of those, those cabinets. So the, the thing that, you know, I think that we arrived at is, you know, what could we best do to, you know, could we require Kiersaj, of course, highly recommend to them that they do, is to provide, you know, protective screenings so it's not a visual, it's not visually intrusive. And then we got even into the discussion of not just plant these, but continuously maintain them. Because it should not be really, I don't think the burden should be put on the Larrys to, you know, maintain landscape around boxes. They're really there to facilitate a utility company. So I think that's, there has been a lot of, I think, back and forth and looking at different options. And I think that's where we arrived at. And I think that that was something that we'd asked of Kiersaj to strongly consider. Julie, correct me if I'm missing anything. I think that's where we're at.
Mike, Mr. Derosha has something.
I just have a question. There's no defined right-of-way? Like, here's my yacht, here's the right-of-way, here's the easement. It's still, it's, is there any way to define it? There's no way to define it. There's no way to say, okay, her house is in the easement. Would that be a, I can define it. I mean, common sense says her house is in it. You come over and over and over to that parka lane. Where is the defined line? I mean, there's, I understand the easement is vague. But a common sense would be, you know, it's over here. We are talking about 300 square feet or 30 by 10 or 35 by 10, 350 square feet. So, you know, I'm, I'm at a loss there. I'm just trying to, you know, understand, I, I understand both.
This is standard in the law, I think, is what.
Yeah, yeah. Well, ideally, it would be a very specific easement, as some are, by roadways or private ways where it meets and bounds in his actual descriptions in the survey that you can make that determination. That wasn't done in this case. It's a very 35-year-old odd grant of, of what the court found, a very broad easement. And in Massachusetts, the law is, in that context, is that we, or Eversource as the owner in the butter, having the benefit of that, what's called dominant estate, have to act reasonably and not overburden the easement or try to minimize the impact to the surveying estate, to the Larrys. And that's, insofar as what we're concerned, we have tried to do that. And the land court has made that determination that we have. We've satisfied Massachusetts law, given the language of this easement, that we're trying to a driveway, we're not trying to requiring a taking down of buildings or anything like that. We've tried to act reasonably and minimize, to the extent we possibly can, the impact on Ms. Larry's property. And that's the law and that's what we're trying to do.
We staked it out for the judge, too.
Yeah. We staked it out and we literally showed where the pads were going to be relative to the shed that was placed there. And literally, the shed that was there could be moved back and then there could be some form of screening behind it.
And for me, I was out there today, but I had the excavator out there and I saw, you know.
And we've minimized in terms of taking down trees and really tried to minimize the impact on, on the area as well.
You know, the, the easement is defined by, by footage.
Hold on. I'll wait until I can say my last closing.
Trying to wrap this up though, because I'm not sure where we can go with this.
In summation, members of the select board, residents of the Town of Kushtanet, the issue before the select board is not the specific location of the easement, the boundaries. It's not whether the easement is being overburdened. And it is not this reasonableness or unreasonableness. Those are decisions for Judge Foster to make in the land court. But what is important and what is before you today is the consideration of, did Kiersaj comply with the special permit that they filed? The answer is clearly no. They're trying to go forward with a whole new plan that is not recorded with the planning board as we speak here today. There's been no indication that I know of that they move forward to go forward to modify that plan. And then second is Ms. Larry's constitutional rights to due process. It is undisputable that Ms. Larry did not receive any notice regarding that December of 2018 special permitting meeting.
Opinion from counsel on that.
That, that is the problem before you today that I want you to.
Mr. Gomes, we've got an opinion from counsel on that. I, did he put it in writing or did we just get a, maybe you can comment on that?
No, so the notice was something that we were looking into, the issue of whether the property was 300 feet away. And so when we pulled it up, it seemed like it could be within the 300-foot. The assessors have a map that they look at and they kind of circle everything out. And there was a section where it seemed like it could touch the 300 feet. But the town council advised that it would be more of an issue, I think, between Kiersaj and Ms. Larry. And that, you know, error could happen, clerical error could happen. But I think there might also be an issue of whether it is impacted by statute of limitations for an appeal. And I think as far as the town goes, I know that you had asked if we could recall the hearing and town council advised that we have no authority to recall a hearing. I think the proper mechanism would be some sort of an appeal.
And just continuing on further, so that was no notice received by my client for that meeting. And whether she's in a butter or not, the plan changed to now this structure is being installed on her property where it's not just in the butter, it's her property that is being used. And in regards to the building department and whether or not it is a major deviation or not, I was the one who gave the updated plan to the building department. They did not have the updated plan showing the equipment pad on my client's property.
Is it on her property? I thought we just, we weren't there whether it is or not.
Technically, technically speaking, both the easement and the pad is on my client's.
Well, the easement, the easement.
Everything's on my client's property.
The easement's not their property. The easement's an easement.
Yes.
So, the easement's not their property. The easement's an easement. So, I just want to be clear on, is it on their property or not? Because if it's on their property, I look at it very differently. If it's on the easement, it's on the easement. If it's on their property, it's on their property.
Yes, so that is the.
Is it on their property or is it on the easement?
And this answers Slukman Derosha's question. If you look at exhibit one to the letter I sent you, is the recorded plan at the registry of deeds? And it shows the Parker's Lane right-of-way. And if you look at where the pad is going to be, it's approximately right at that bend, right at the most narrow position of this roadway. 11.4 feet. So at the narrowest portion of this roadway is where they are planning on putting this. So the court will look to the location of this road and the reasonableness in making that decision. But I believe what is most important to the select board is whether or not Kiersaj has complied. Clearly they haven't. And then second, whether my client's constitutional rights have been satisfied. And that again is answered in the negative because she did not receive that notice.
On the land court decision, what are you, what more time, your thoughts on the land?
My, my opinion regarding the land court decision is, we are going to continue in that case. Once the survey is complete, showing exactly where it is, the judge is going to be able to make a revised decision based on the math behind the substantial trespass and encroachment beyond the easement area. Now, the easement area, its boundaries, is going to be determined by the judge and that's going to be based on reasonableness. And the question's going to be whether or not this pad is reasonably within this location where they put it.
But is, is it fair to say, though, that the judge says, I, this is going to be, understand this further arguments back and forth? But at this point, it's my opinion that Kiersaj should be allowed to do what they're doing. Based on what I know, is that fair to say?
Based on the preliminary nature of, during the pency of the litigation. And then a final decision will be made by the judge.
But the judge has sort of said, you know, I'm not going to stop Kiersaj from proceeding with the project based on what I know.
Yes, and here clearly Kiersaj does have the rights to that recorded easement. The judge did not have the information of the specifics of how much this encroachment is to be able to make a decision.
That's not right. That's not accurate. That, that's just a plain statement. The court saw what was going on. And if you look at page eight of the court's decision, I'm sorry, but that's just.
The location which Kiersaj proposes to install the pad is within the utility easement.
Yes. And it goes on to define exactly what is in the language of the easement. And it says, but rattle out the direction of a set line along parka lane. Then discusses the law. And the next sentence says, the pad mount will be located at the edge of the paved portion of parka way. This is a reasonable location as the paved width of the parka lane is narrowed. Installing the pad mount within the paved width would interfere with the passage along parka way. The pad mount will be located well within the utility easement, period.
If I may continue, that is going to be decided by the judge. Going back to where I was with this major deviation in the building department, they didn't have a copy of this plan. I would like that officially put forth on the town that he is approving this substantial deviation. And what I think the select board should look at is, this is not just a, or deviation. This is the location of electrical apparatus. This is not a minor deviation between 7,000 and 7,700 panels. This is a substantial interference of locating this equipment on my client's property. Whether or not it's in the easement, that will be determined by the judge. But before you hear today, the main issues of whether or not the special permit is being complied with and whether or not my client received proper notice is what should be focused on. And the last thing I will say is, we are moving forward with the special permitting appeal process. But because of my position with the town, it's going to be through successor counsel. Between now and then, we'll see what we can do. But we are continuing to go forward with the land court proceeding and exerting all rights for Ms. Larry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Slukman. Thank you. Gentlemen, thoughts? Final thoughts? Let's, let's not try to circle back to where we were. Let's try to move forward.
I don't, I just, I still look at the poles and why they can't be on one side of the street versus the other side of the street. And I think that they, the habitat, favor in the Kushtanet land charge, I think if this was.
That unfamiliar, we should have dealt with that before.
We probably could have done some speaking to these people and said, you know, why can't we put the poles on that side of the street? It's basically, you have the layout of the easement, right? And then, so the road, the Todd Road is, call it, it's very narrow in nature. I'll call it 15 feet to be generous, but I don't even think the Todd part of it. And if the easement's 20 feet, why can't you put the poles two and a half, three feet in off the side of that road? That's still within the easement. So I think there was ways to get around this without doing this and.
What, what option, I mean, I'm.
The poles on the other side of the road. I mean, instead of being, instead of being on this side, on the, on the family side, the poles, even if you ran the poles all the way down, at some point you could cross the road for the last little section and down the, the road, the 200 feet or whatever it is to keep those six poles off. And you could just break down the road and have them right on the side of the road. I mean, you drive down any street today, even in the, in the main parts of downtown, street poles are two feet off the curbing. So, two feet in from the, the road, you can put a pole. And there's no traffic, for God's sakes, there's, there's a residency back there. How many people are traveling up and down that road for us to worry about somebody driving into a pole? It's not mains fee, and even if it was, mains fee, poles go outside the sidewalk right here. They're two feet in from the curbing. So that's not a concern for Eversource either. I just think that there wasn't enough dialogue on this. And I think that Kiersaj is being rushed to get things tied in because of permits and grants and things of that nature. You're at a financial deadline and it could be devastating to your underlying of your profits. And, and I think that's wrong. I think that if this, if we had more time and you had more time, and I think you can admit that you're on a time constraint because of grants, you're going to lose funding, whatever the case may be. I think that if we had more time for this dialogue, and this should have been in front of the Board of Selectmen a while back then, we could have had dialogue and perhaps we could have helped accommodate the situation. We wouldn't be here tonight all disputing where poles go and where equipment goes. And I, I really do believe in my colleagues that we could have provided some resolve for this situation. But unfortunately, there is timelines. And I think that's what made the judge go with this preliminary injunction because it was explained to him that if we don't get this done, your honor, we're going to lose $3 million worth of grants from the feds. And, you know, what do you, what do you think the judge is going to say? Oof, you know, all that, all of this, okay, let's do it. And hey, if we ain't need to move it, which is going to be kind of, unfortunately for Mrs. Larry, I, I see this as a loose loose. Because once the, all that equipment's there and it's done, you know, is the judge really going to say, move it? I don't know. I, I just, I think this is bogus and I think it should have been resolved a while ago. I really wish it would have came in front of the Board of Selectmen a while ago and this stemmed out to an issue, we should have been notified that this was a town problem.
Mr. Derosha, any?
Well, I think if parties are coming here tonight, you know, I was hoping, you know, looking at, maybe there could be an amicable solution to this. But it doesn't appear that way. And I don't know what our role as select board can do.
I'm, I'm told our only authority is public safety on, on, on issues like this. Our only, our only, you know, this is the role of the planning board and the building inspector and our only authority is public safety. And beyond that, we have no authority to. I mean, it's nice that we could bring everybody in to talk and listen and speak to each other. But my understanding is, is based on the opinion of, of town council, which we got on this issue, that, that we don't have a lot of options. We can strongly suggest that the planning board meet with the building inspector and, and review what's going on here and make sure that, and I don't know when the planning board meets next, but, you know, work to protect the resident. But I'm, I'm not sure what our authority is here other than to, other than to suggest that to the planning board. And the building inspector certainly reports to the Board of Selectmen and I, I know you've spoken to him, but.
No, because as it's, excuse me.
Yeah, no, go.
Because as my understanding, the project is moving forward. You're going to place the cabinets where they go and that sort of thing. And at some point in the future, there'll be a, a final judgment on, on the answer.
Correct, that's correct, yeah. We have a pre-trial on the, on the 17th of December and hopefully we're trying to get a trial date in February.
A trial?
Yeah.
Okay.
A trial date. Because it's out of our hand, we can't put like a cease and desist order on the project. I mean, that's, that's not within our limits as a select board. It's, you know, and I understand the points that the resident is bringing up. We've been notified in that. But that's not a matter for the select board to decide. You know, we do have a preliminary judgment on the issue. So I assume the company's going to keep going until it does go to a trial. So, you know, I mean, it was educational. I did learn about this, well, is that the right word? You know, informational about what the situation is here with this project. You know, it eliminated any rumors and, oh, we're putting this up and that sort of thing. So now we have it right out in the open.
I do want to see the cabinets. You've got my email address. I'd like to see what, you know, I'll travel a little bit to see something comparable of what's proposed. I want to see them. I want to understand what's happening.
You know, I'm, I'm still hoping that, you know, I understand Eversource is, you know, calling some shots or have made some. calling some shots, or have made some design, you know, specifications that you have to follow. I don't know if they can get involved and try to make this matter, you know, resolve this matter in a timely fashion for everybody. You know, if they can go a little distance, you know, I don't know. Well, that's what I mean. As select board members, I, you know, I don't know on that. I can always say, I hope that we can come to an agreement, and I drag this out for two or three years, and appeal, and appeal, and, you know, get a final decision, and live with it, and be, you know, I mean, and go from there.
Mr. Young, when does the planning board meet next?
Our next meeting is scheduled for December the 30th.
Okay. Is it possible to meet before then to discuss this?
I can ask.
Just look at this?
I mean, for the record, we have had significant discussion.
All right.
I just, I don't know, you know, you say that, I don't know who to believe, because we used, I've heard tonight that he said that it's okay, and he can make that judgment, but then when I talked to him, he said that he wasn't okay with, then we tried to work with Kirsage. He did say we tried to work with him to change the plan, move the plans and everything else, but I don't know, I just, I just think that, you know, it's the wow-wow us here, and people are making decisions without, you know, enough information put forth, and I just don't like it. I really don't. And I'll tell you right now, if it was you, Mr. Cabral, you, Mr. Derosha, or myself, where this was landed on our property, I think we'd be angered, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So, I just, again, it's not a good practice in the town of Acushnet, I can tell you about right now. And I think when there is a change of plans like this, we should go back to the planning board, back for a public hearing, not by one building commissioner to make a judgment call on something like he did here. He usually makes very good judgment calls, I'll say that, but in this particular matter, I think that because of the significant changes, should have went back to the planning board. That's my opinion. And how the primary resident-
I agree with that.
-of butter did not get notification is friggin' beyond me, and I'm not happy about that process either. That's very upsetting to me. I mean, there's really one of butter. So, who got a notice? That's what I want to know, because there's only one friggin' person that should have got a notice. And that person's sitting right there, and she didn't get the notice. So, who's got a notice? I mean, what do we have, an empty room at the planning board hearing? Does nobody have witnesses?
Ms. Eber, hold on.
Just to clarify, too, so the abutters list for the special permit hearing is the one where she was not included on the abutters list. But on the subsequent, the hearing that we had, and the hearing that we're going to have tomorrow, she was included on the list, the abutters list.
But the most important one, she wasn't.
So, we get to do this again tomorrow night?
Yeah, we do have this scheduled for tomorrow night for the poll hearing.
Can I just say something, if you don't mind?
Ms. Leary, yes, please.
So, in regards to your clerical error, that clerical error has cost me tens of thousands of dollars. So, when I watch the planning board meeting, they're being, a solar farm is being presented to four or five gentlemen. Where is the solar specialist to make sure that the solar company is doing their job? Where is the town of Acushnet's engineering company, or engineering department, if you have one, to make sure that the solar company is doing what they're supposed to be doing? There's no checks and balances. People are making decisions that ultimately affected me in an extremely negative way. And now what I'm hearing from the planning board is, "Well, there's really nothing we can do. You approved it. You approved it with no education, no knowledge of how a solar facility works, how it's going to affect the abutters. But we don't care about the abutters, right? It's just a lonely resident at the end of the road, fighting for her rights and her property. It is a family estate that I have been near for 60 years, and you're asking me to roll over and play dead. But I'm not going to, because when I have real estate people come in, give me an appraisal of my property now, and then appraise it with knowledge and experience of what can happen to the property value, which is intention-wise, never mind electrical boxes. Three, bigger than a washer machine on my property. And it's not just the pad, it's the buffer zone that goes around that, too. So, now you gotta think about that. Now I gotta plant trees, and then what happens to those boxes when the solar facility, and 10 years from now, everybody decides, "Well, solar sucked, we're closing this down." Who's responsible for that? Are you gonna pay the taxes on that property that you confiscated from me? Are you, where's the liability insurance for that property that now, if someone crashes into that, or if every neighborhood kid go over there and stick his finger in the socket? It's on my property. Am I liable for that? What's gonna happen when I refinance my house, and the guy says, "Holy, what the heck is this?" This is the problem. It was approved with no knowledge of solar facilities, how things were going to work, no engineer, and no checks and balances. And now you got a resident who is spending tens of thousands of dollars to fight for her right, based on a clerical error. There's no excuse for it. There's absolutely no excuse for this.
Apologies.
There's nothing I can say to you, Ms. Leary, don't make it better, so I'm sorry.
Single item agenda tonight. I think we've had a lot of conversation, and I don't think there's any action we can take, unfortunately, but I guess the only appropriate action is a motion to adjourn at this point.
Some moves.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.